Alright you guys, we are officially live, so you can feel free to start whenever you are ready.
Great, thanks LaShine. So, good evening everyone. My name is Kyle Kling. I'm a Transportation Project Manager with the City of Charlottesville Department of Public Works. And I'm the City's Project Manager for the Fontaine Avenue Streetscape Project. First and foremost, I want to thank you all in advance for your interest in this project, and more specifically for attending this public hearing tonight. To give you guys a brief overview of how things will be laid out tonight, we will begin this evening's meeting with a brief presentation of about 10 minutes or so. It's a prerecorded presentation that will play. Following that presentation, we'll have an informal question and answer session, which attendees can ask city staff and members of the design team any questions that they have related to the project, or any questions that may arise as the presentation is playing. We ask that you guys use the chat feature available on the Zoom platform to send those questions in, and we'll answer those questions at the end of the presentation. Following the question and answer session, we will begin a formal public hearing portion of the meeting. I'm hoping that begins at around 6:30 PM. During that public hearing portion, each individual who wishes to provide comments this evening will have three minutes to provide comments to the design team. We will not be responding to those comments verbally this evening. Instead, those comments will be formally documented, and we will respond to those in writing and post those in a transcript to the project website. It's our goal to have those posted by the end of the month, or by early June. And then, prior to us getting started tonight, I'd just like to do a quick round of introductions with members of the design team that are here tonight. So I'll hand it over to Owen Peary with RKNK to get that process started.
Hey, thanks Kyle. Owen Peary with RKNK, I'm Project Manager for this project. And RKNK is employed by City of Charlottesville to help them design this project and get it ready for construction. So, so we're really pleased to be here tonight. We've, we've come a long way since we first started the project to be at what we call about 60 or 70% complete with our design. And here at a public hearing amidst all of what we've been through in the last year is really exciting for all of us on the design team, and we look forward to your questions. Amy?
Hi everyone, Amy Sandberg, also with RKNK, serving as the Deputy Project Manager, helping Owen in conjunction with Kyle as we work through the design process for the project. And also joining our team is Ken Ray, who I will let introduce himself with Tool.
Ken Ray, Deputy Director of Landscape Architecture at Tool Design. We've been helping with the multimodal aspects of the project, as well as landscaping, striping, and marking, and been through the whole thing. When I echo Owen's compliments at the beginning of the presentation, this has been a great project, and it's good to see us get to this point.
Great, thanks guys. And also, on our end as well here as panelists, we have Tony Edwards, who's a Development Services Manager with the City of Charlottesville. And then, as most of you are aware, this is a VDOT SmartScale-funded project, and we have Michael Barnes, who is the Project Coordinator on VDOT's end here this evening as well. So with that being said, we'll go ahead and get into the presentation. I will share my screen here and see if this pops up. Alright. Let me know if you guys have any issues hearing this or seeing this. Alright, having some audio issues with this, but we will see.
Kyle, just so you know, it seems like we're not getting the audio.
Okay. Amy, do you want to try screen sharing and see what you can figure out here? It's playing through my speakers, which is an issue, but...
Yeah, I can try. I need you to stop sharing before I can, but I can try after that.
Welcome to the Fontaine Avenue Streetscape Improvements Design Public Hearing. Thank you for your interest in the project. This presentation is being brought to you by the City of Charlottesville in conjunction with RKNK and Tool Design. We will be giving an update on the project, discussing next steps in the process, and letting you know where to find additional information. To see the project details and a video of what the corridor may look like, please visit the project website at fontainesstreetscape.com. You can also view this presentation in its entirety and submit any comments you may have on the project. First, we will give a review of the project, including the project goals, budget, schedule, meetings attended, and feedback from the last public open house. The Fontaine Streetscape Project has identified four key project goals. In line with the City of Charlottesville overall transportation goals, the project seeks to make Fontaine Avenue a complete street, which improves accommodations for all users, ensuring safe passage for pedestrians and bicyclists, understanding that this serves as a gateway corridor into the city, and ensuring that the impression is attractive, improving access to local facilities, and ensuring these connections are also easily accessed by pedestrians, bicyclists, and transit users. At the last public open house, the team provided a questionnaire asking about important features in the design of Fontaine Avenue to improve the current design. There were opportunities to complete a survey in person during the meeting and online following the meeting. The chart on the screen shows how the public values bike lanes, emergency vehicle access, and wider sidewalks. These factors were used to shape the 60% design of the project. Funding for this project was obtained through a VDOT program called SmartScale, which provides funding for local projects throughout the state on a competitive basis. The SmartScale application placed a high emphasis on safety and multimodal improvements, which ultimately led to its selection and funding of $11,700,000 for the proposed improvements. The 60% plans for the project were submitted in the summer of 2020, and utility coordination has been ongoing with private utility owners. Right-of-way acquisition and utility relocations are scheduled to be completed by early 2023. Final design will take place during the same time period, with 100% plans also being completed by early 2023. The project will be advertised and bid by contractors between the fall of 2022 and the spring of 2023, with construction starting in the spring of 2023. To date, the project team has undergone a robust public meeting schedule to both gather information and solicit feedback leading up to the design public hearing. This has included a review by the Planning Commission and City Council to ensure this project complies with the City of Charlottesville comprehensive plan. We will now get into plans and renderings showing the proposed improvements to Fontaine Avenue. The project area, per the SmartScale application, is along Fontaine Avenue from the city limits to the Jefferson Park Avenue and Maury Avenue intersection. The project falls within the Jefferson Park Avenue neighborhood, with the Frye Spring neighborhood south of the railroad tracks. The Fontaine Research Park is on the western side of the site, the City of Charlottesville Fire Station within the central portion, and several local businesses on the eastern edge. The image on the screen is a graphical rendering of the product site. In the following slides will show close-up segments with associated renderings of the improvements. From the city limits to Summit Street, there is primarily residential housing, with University of Virginia property to the north. During this phase, we make the transformation from bicycle accommodations within the street to dedicated bicycle lanes on both sides of the street. The sidewalks are improved on each side of the street by making the south side wider and adding a sidewalk to the north side. As you reach the Summit Street intersection, we have a protected intersection design. This shifts pedestrians and bicyclists away from turning traffic to promote safety for all users. At the intersection, we also have a new crosswalk for safe passage across Fontaine Avenue. This was highly desired during feedback we received throughout the outreach period. This segment features sidewalks, landscape buffers, dedicated bicycle lanes with buffers, and vehicle travel lanes. On the south side, which is shown on the right, there is a proposed retaining wall that will minimize impacts to the surrounding properties. These improvements are similar to those shown on other segments, as you will see in the next few slides. The central portion of the project extends from the Summit Street intersection to Lewis Street. This corridor features the City of Charlottesville Fire Station, a gas station, and several residential properties that are both single-family homes and student apartments. This segment features a similar concept to the first section, and introduces a second protected intersection at Piedmont Avenue, which also has a dedicated crosswalk. The Summit Street to Lewis Street section is very similar to the first part of the project. One key difference in this section is that the trees on the north side, shown to the left, will be slightly smaller to accommodate the overhead power and communication lines along the street. All of the landscaping will be per City of Charlottesville standards and chosen specifically for success along the corridor. On the eastern side of the project, there is a commercial section between Lewis Street and Jefferson Park Avenue and Maury Avenue. This section converts from the general concept shown thus far in the presentation to become more traditional. The bicycle lanes on the north side are shared lanes that become dedicated facilities just to the west of Lewis Street. On the south side, the bicycle lane remains, but is not buffered. It is anticipated that the bicycle lane will be shown across the intersection to connect to the existing facilities to the east on Jefferson Park Avenue. The turning lanes existing today will remain in order to provide access to destinations to the north and south. As shown in the plan view, this section varies from others within the corridor by removing the landscape and bicycle buffers and maintaining the existing turning lanes in the eastbound direction. The video on the screen is a computer rendering of the corridor once the Fontaine Streetscape improvements are implemented. Everything shown is an artistic rendering and not field conditions. Plantings, materials, and features shown are subject to change. Here we see the entrance corridor to the city, and the introduction of dedicated bicycle lanes. Here's a protected intersection at Summit Street, with a dedicated crosswalk with protective signage. Here's some enhanced landscaping. Here we see smaller trees on the north side to accommodate the power lines. Now we see bicycle lanes converting into shared lanes at the end of the corridor. Here's how we'll be maintaining access to the existing businesses. Additional coordination will continue to take place with Albemarle County for the transition to county property. To view an extended version of this video, which includes driving in the opposite direction, please visit the project website at fontainesstreetscape.com. Following incorporation of feedback from this meeting, the project will seek City Council approval of the findings during summer of 2021. Upon approval, the team will start the right-of-way phase by asking VDOT for authorization in the late summer of 2021. Once approval has been obtained, right-of-way acquisition will begin. This is anticipated in early 2022 and extending for approximately one year. The 90% plans are anticipated to be submitted in early 2022. These documents will incorporate feedback received and additional design work. For more information, please visit our project website, fontainesstreetscape.com. On the website, you can view this presentation in its entirety and submit any comments you may have on the project. Plans can be found on the website, as well as an overall graphic of the corridor and additional project information. If you need any assistance seeing the plans, please reach out to the City Project Manager, Kyle Kling, to set up an appointment at City Hall at klingk@charlottesville.gov, or 434-970-3394. Thank you for attending. Please let us know any thoughts or feedback you have on our website, or via email to the City Project Manager, Kyle Kling. Provide your comments during the public hearing session on May 12th, or submit via the project website, or in writing by May 26, 2021. Written responses to the received comments will be available on the project website by June 4th. We appreciate your interest in the Fontaine Streetscape Improvements Project.
Great, thanks for helping out with that, Amy. So we'd like to open it up to any questions that there may be related to the presentation, or just any other design features in general associated with the project. As I indicated before, if you have any questions, feel free to drop those in the chat box. We're not seeing any as of now, but you know, this is why we're here tonight, to answer any questions that may come in. Also, feel free to use, you know, the raise hand icon as well, if you'd like to ask any questions verbally. Yeah, so the first question that came in from Robin Heels talks about the retaining walls in the portion between Summit Street and the city-county line. We do expect there to be some impacts to those, to those larger trees that are there, simply to get that, that work in. We do envision to have a pretty detailed replanting plan in that area, so you know, we're confident that, you know, anything that's lost will be replaced on a one-to-one ratio, if not more. And any plantings we do use will come from the city's pre-approved planting list as well. And we'll be certain to work with, you know, our colleagues in urban forestry to make sure that the right plants are getting, getting placed, you know, along the corridor. And then, the next question we have is from Christopher Hawk. So, great question. He's asking, "How have we been working with UVA in the county on the design?" As the presentation indicated, we had set up a steering committee for this meeting, which has been in place since the beginning of the project. So we're going on almost two and a half years with, with the steering committee now. There are representatives from both of those entities on that committee, so they have been involved with that design process. And then furthermore, we have had multiple meetings with the university's Office of the Architect as well, over the past several months, or sorry, several years, on this project. We've worked closely with them to come up with some stormwater management concepts for the project, as well as talked about what can and can't be done to make a smooth transition to, into the county, and as you approach the research park there. The next question we have is from Ashley. She's asking, "Is the easement that will be required for the north side of the street 15 feet?" So the easements along the corridor are not consistent. It just really varies by parcel to parcel along the corridor. In some areas, we will be requiring a little more property than, than others. I think, and Amy and Owen, you guys can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think right now we're looking at somewhere between eight and 10 feet, based off of existing right-of-way, and some of the more severe cases. Is that accurate?
Owen, you're muted.
I said, that's pretty accurate. As I, as I recall, I don't have the plans in front of me, but yes. And for the most part, it's going to be right-of-way that we'll have. There'll be no, like, utility easements outside of the cities right-of-way. We're going to, from some, from Mmosa to JPA, the utilities will be in the utility strip, which is inside the cities right-of-way that they'll have for the roadway. On the east, on the western end of the project, there is a currently a utility easement there on the UVA, primarily UVA property, and that, that utility easement will be relocated, and those utilities will stay in the easement through that segment of the project.
Great, thanks Owen. Moving along, we have a question from Bill. Bill, you see, your comment is that you typed too slowly. Would you like to give a verbal, ask a verbal question? If so, LaShine, do you mind unmuting him to do so?
Bill, can you hear us?
Oh, hi. I didn't realize you were talking to me. Yeah, what I'm seeing is no left-turn lanes. And living right on or off this road, I deal with this every day. And when you're coming up from the bypass, and someone has to turn left into Piedmont Housing, just west of the firehouse, it just backs everything up. And that's on top of the issue that the light at Fontaine JPA has recently been... No, not that light. The light at the research park has been changed, and the backup there's gotten a lot worse, because it's been slowed down, which makes no sense. But, you know, the road already can't handle the commute traffic. And you're now going to funnel it down into one very tight lane with no way to turn left, except to stop everyone. Alright, that's the question.
Yeah, so as of now, the plans do not call for any dedicated turning lanes besides at the JPA/Maury intersection. One thing we are looking at is to have the lights along the corridor, so the light at the JPA/Maury intersection, as well as the one at the research park, be a little more synced up than they are today. We're hopeful that, that will help alleviate some of the congestion during the peak hour. But, you know, this is, the intent of this project is to, you know, be a multimodal project. It's, it's to focus, really focus on bicycle and pedestrians, and making the corridor safer for all users. We realize now that some of the laneless out there are fairly significant, so, you know, you do have some higher speeds along the corridor. We're hopeful that narrowing those laneless will help reduce those speeds as well. But yeah, there, as of right now, we do not intend to have any dedicated turn lanes into any other neighborhoods. Alright, so moving on. John has asked, "How will businesses be handled for the areas that will be impacted?" Not certain I understand the question, but we have been in contact with some of the business owners throughout this process. We will continue those conversations as we get into the right-of-way phase. You know, as you saw on, on the presentation, we do envision there to be some impact to those businesses. But we will work, do our best to mitigate those impacts during the construction phase, and then work with those business owners and property owners as we finalize the design to minimize any impacts and make accommodations as best as possible. John, do that?
Two people that have their hands raised. That's been raised for a minute. Can I bring one of them in?
Yeah, of course.
Tom, can you hear us? Tom? I don't know what's going on with his audio. Let's try to bring him in again. Tom, can you hear us? You might have to unmute your mic. I'm not sure what's going on with his audio, guys. I'm gonna go to the next person. John, can you hear us?
Can you hear me now?
Yep, we can hear you now.
Sorry, so my question, I realized I didn't type it incorrectly. So as far as the businesses in this area, I noticed that, well, from previous renderings that I've seen, that I've been told that, you know, like, I'm at 2206 Fontaine, we're gonna be losing a parking spot, which I've discussed with the owner right now. I told him we don't have much of an issue with that, but how's it gonna impact our signage? How's redoing signage for these businesses in here in the area gonna work?
Yeah, John, so I think if, if the design is proposed to impact any signage, we'll work with the property owner to relocate those, you know, to, to a spot that's mutually agreed upon. Based off of what my understanding is, there's, the only one that we see now potentially being impacted are, is the stretch towards the very end there, where, where some of those businesses are, I think, the very first property was, was one for certain. We know that it's gonna need to be relocated. But no, it, it's not a, you're going to lose to sign type of deal. We will work with the property owners to, or with the businesses and properties. type of deal. We will work with the property owners to ensure with the businesses and property owners to assure that those get relocated to a spot that's going to be beneficial for all parties. All right, let's see. I missed one question from Holly had asked, how many feet are being taken from the front lawn of 2309 Fontaine? As I indicated, Holly, right away whis, you know, are very variable throughout the project. I I don't have the exact answer for that off the top of my head, but if you'd like to shoot me an email, I can get you definitely give you a more clear answer on that. Once I have a chance to to actually dive into the plans and and look at some of those those figures, I'd be happy to to get you that information.
Kyle Woods, what was the address again?
2309.
Thank you.
All right. So moving on, Tom had asked, Tom Beninsky had asked, what happened to the February 2018 design guidance that if wider than four foot planting strips were decided upon, there would be a limitation of one planting strip instead of two. Tom, I don't ever recall that being the case. I think we've always intended to having planting strips on on both sides of the street. I think you know, what we did realize is if four, if there are going to be you know, planting strips less than four feet and with that, some of the plantings inside those were changed, just just to accommodate you know, smaller trees because of soil volumes, but it has always been our full intent on this project to have planting strips on both sides of the street with obviously with the exception of the area down there by JPA and Mari intersection where things get a little more constrained and we don't have you know, the right away to to accommodate this planting areas. Owen, Amy, do you guys want to add anything to that? Or Ken even? I know you guys have done a lot of the landscape work.
No, I was just gonna echo. I mean, you're spot on that. We definitely wanted to have the buffer on both sides so that people walking or, you know, weren't right next to the curb. And in those areas that were tighter, just as you said, it just changed the planting design more so than anything else. Just for like you said, for soul volume for larger trees. So we are still able to do some shrubs and small plantings, but it's just enough to get a buffer to add more comfort for both sides of the sidewalk.
Great. Thanks, Ken. Moving along, Stuart Garner has asked, as a result of the improvements, do you expect increased traffic coming into Fry Springs? Via JPA? And if yes, how will this be managed? I don't envision any type of increase in traffic by as a result of these improvements. You know, as we had discussed, this is more so a multimodal project. You may see an increase in bicycle and pedestrian traffic along the corridor, you know. That's our hope with these improvements, but in terms of actual vehicular traffic being increased, I don't envision any. And Owen, Amy, do you guys?
Yeah, I think you answered that. Well, Kyle, we're not adding capacity to the roadway. It's more about making this roadway safer for everybody. So while traffic is growing in Charlottesville, so in the background of everything we do, this project's not going to drive people to want to come into the to the city through this corridor that don't already do so.
Thanks, Owen. Adrian Dent has asked a couple of questions here. I'll start with the first one. Who is responsible for caring for the replantings after the project's completed? So ultimately, there'll be a one year warranty period or some warranty period associated with the replantings in which the contractor will be responsible for anything that's planted within the right away. Also, anything that's within the right away will will also be the city's responsibility to maintain. You know, after after the project is completed for anything that lands outside of the right away or on private property, if we do any type of replantings on on private property, which we have temporary easements on during the project, there'll be some type of an agreement worked out between the city or the property owner during the right away phase that speaks to who's responsible for those maintenance and and for how long that agreement is in effect for. And then the following question is the driveways on the south side where there are retaining walls, are cars able to turn around in those driveways or might this be? Or might this arrangement create cars backing out of a driveway with a slight with limited sight line? So if I'm understanding your question correctly, you're asking if if the areas of the retaining wall, if there's going to be sight distance issues in that vicinity. Lashin, do you mind bringing her in just so I can get some clarity on this? I believe I'm understanding that the question correctly, but I want to make sure.
Yeah. Hi, Adrian, can you hear us?
I can. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, great. Yeah. So the question was like, like, I don't know about the arrangement in that parking area or that driveway, but in many of them, a car can pull in, but then has to back out if it pulls in. There's not any way to do like a three point turn within a private property and come out facing forward. So I'm wondering if that might be the case in this driveway and how you've anticipated that.
Yeah, that's a that's a good question. You know, I I don't know if Owen or Amy can shed some more light on that. It's I don't think it's something that I've really thought about. To be honest, but you know, when I'll just add when these walls are going to be constructed and we're looking at the design of these things, we're going to ensure that, you know, there are adequate sight lines in all directions and there's no, you know, visual impediments for vehicles entering or exiting those properties.
Adrian, are you are you speaking about a particular property or a property in particular or because? Go ahead.
I don't know of a house number a lot or anything like that. I just saw it in the rendering when we were being kind of brought conducted forward. I guess east on Fontaine.
So most of the driveways today are head in or back in and come back out the same way for the private residents. As as Kyle said, excuse me, we're working with the with the businesses that have those several, each of them have a couple of spaces out in front of their properties and we're working with those. We've had meetings with them in the field and sort of know how they need to operate. And we're trying to incorporate those impacts as best we can. And the only other place that I think Cal's referring to is when we get further towards the west end of the project, we do have a retaining wall that is in the vicinity of where on the south side is between Westerly and and what's the next street, Amy? I forget. Across from Mimoso. We have a couple retaining walls in that area. So we're trying to like stay as far as we can off of private property and they are pretty far back from the intersections and and they'll be back at the right away line, which is back behind the buffer strip, which is back behind the sidewalk. So there should be no site issues or problems from the side streets or those driveways as well. And one thing we're doing that it should improve people's ability to get out of the side streets and driveways is, I mean, with the addition of the bike lanes and elimination of about one block of on street parking where you can't see today, that will improve sight distance coming out of people's driveways as well.
Great. Thanks, Owen. Moving on, the next question that we have here is posed by Mimi and Kevin Fitzpatrick. They're asking, is the eight to 10 foot extension anticipated to reduce available business parking for those areas on the east end? We do have some areas along that stretch where we will be encroaching into the fringes of those lots, and we do anticipate some impacts to parking for those businesses. What those impacts are currently, we're not entirely sure. But as I mentioned before, we have we have met with property owners along that stretch back in the fall. They're aware of these potential changes and will continue to have conversations with them to find a solution that works and hopefully not impact the properties too much. Moving on, Tom Beninsky has asked, how does this project take into account the volume of cars turning left into Mimoso? Ken, and then it says can be one out of six cars coming into town. So one in six cars coming to town will turn into Mimoso. From a vehicular standpoint, as we already mentioned, we are not adding any left hand turn lanes. So the conditions will remain the same as they are today. I think from a pedestrian standpoint, we are making improvements to that intersection, bringing pedestrians a little bit farther out into this into the road a little bit in a protected fashion to make them more visible to to those vehicles turning. And then just the increased visibility of the crosswalks and pavement markings will assist with that. But from a vehicular standpoint, you know, we anticipate the condition to remain the same as it is today. Robin Kills has said, as a Westerly resident, I'm very glad to see the additional crosswalk across Fontaine. Will these be equipped with push button flash indicators? So I believe, Amy, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe one or two of them along the corridor are, I believe those are more in the middle section of Fontaine, if if I recall correctly. Is that correct?
Yeah, we're looking at the Mimoso Summit intersection as well as Piedmont Avenue.
All right, moving on. Tim has asked, will the speed limit remain at 35 miles an hour? Yes, as of right now, we do not envision any change or any reduction to the speed limit along the corridor. We performed a detailed traffic study early on in the design phase and you know, the yield on that was that the majority of vehicles, or at least those in the 85th percentile were traveling within the posted speed limit. And we didn't indicate any any type of speeding problem along the corridor. So we do anticipate that the posted speed limit will remain 35 miles an hour. Next comment we have is from D Smith. It says, this looks great. As a resident of Buckingham Circle for 28 years, I have hoped for this kind of improvement for a long time. As my wife does not drive on freeways, if the Fontaine corridor is closed to traffic at any time, she will not be able to get into town. Do you anticipate road closures resulting in detours onto the bypass during the project? Also, does VDOT have plans to install lights at the bypass intersection? To answer the first question, so it's our it's our plan to have at least one lane of traffic open in each direction throughout the duration of the construction project. We did look into doing some type of detour and and we just don't believe it's feasible at this time. So we are hopeful to to have traffic moving through the corridor, at least in one one direction, one lane in each direction for the majority of construction. I believe there's going to be a brief period where we'll have a flagging operation out there, but to be blunt, it's going to be impactful. There's no easy way to construct this project without having impacts. But there will be no detour. We will keep the road open and we will have access to businesses and into residents throughout the project. Tom has asked, what is the estimated duration?
I'm sorry, I couldn't unmute fast enough. There is a second part of that question. I don't know if Michael wants to take that one.
Yes.
About the signals at Fontaine at the interchange. I think I know the answer, but I'd prefer to defer to him for sure.
Thank you, Owen, for asking me. I'll be honest with you. I'm not managing project, but Ms. Smith, that there is a plan working through the the Smart Scale program, which is funding this project. That is a VDOT County project that is envisioning making some improvements either side of the the interchange there with the bypass on Fontaine. That will include also running shared use path through the intersection over to the western side. As far as lighting of that intersection, I do not know. If you want to send Kyle an email, I could put you in touch with the project manager for that project. We can probably answer that very specific question. Thank you.
Thanks, Michael. So trying to get through these questions as quickly as possible. You know, we have a handful left here. So Lashin has indicated she's actually disabled it. So I'll get through what we have here. And then we'll begin the public public comment portion for anybody that still has comments at the end of this or questions. I'm happy to stay on and answer any questions that may come in. But Tom had asked, what is the estimated duration that driveways will be closed during construction? A handful of days, I think. So the majority of the driveways will need to be you know, replaced or reconfigured during the construction of this, as I mentioned in a previous response. You know, it's our intent and it's our hope to you know, provide access to residents throughout the duration of the project, but there will be some, a small period of time, a couple of days to, you know, maybe three or four days where driveways are closed to be reconstructed. And we will work with property owners and give you guys as much as heads up as possible to make accommodations to find, you know, alternative places to park during that timeframe. Scott Clark has asked, how much flexibility is left for the planting design at the west end? And then he mentions it would be preferred to have a denser planning design in this area rather than a hardscape with isolated individual trees. Scott, I think we're still working through the planting plan. We haven't really made a decision on what type of trees you know, are to be planted there. We we kind of wanted to leave that open for as long as possible as we work through some of the you know, more concrete aspects of the design. So I I think there is some flexibility there still and we'll work closely with, as I mentioned, our members of our steering committee on that as well as you know, our urban forestry group here in the city. And Ken, do you have anything to add to that? Or is that pretty accurate?
Very accurate. We're still waiting.
And then last, I think, last question here is from a couple more questions. Tom has asked, estimated mature height of trees on both sides of Fontaine? Will solar power panels be shaded? So on your side of the street, Tom, the north side of the street, that is where the power lines are. Those are going to be under story trees. So those won't be any taller than you know, the height of half a height of a power pole. Maybe they will not be in conflict with with any of the power lines there. So they should not block any solar panels on that side of the street. On the south side of the street, we will be planting larger canopy trees. Those things can, as you know, those things can grow pretty significant in in height. So I am not certain how tall those will get. I think it just really depends on the species for that side of the street and and what's you know, chosen in that planting palette. Scott's follows has followed up, a planted slope will retain the current appearance better than a wall. If there must be a wall, could it be stepped and include planting beds? So the reason the wall is in place, Scott, is to limit impacts to the properties. If we're not having a retaining wall along those portions of the corridor down there towards the end, we would be looking at taking property that ends up, you know, two or three feet adjacent to somebody's foundation. And just to meet the the necessary grades to to get something in there. So unfortunately, we we are pretty set on that setup down there just to limit the impacts. I think the same could be said about some type of tiered wall approach as well. It's just too impactful to the properties there. We want to leave those people, you know, with as much backyard as possible. As I indicated, we can talk about you know, how how that gets replanted and what species are there, but in terms of the physical you know, characteristics of that, I think it's pretty much set in stone with the wall being in place. Tom has asked, what is the duration of construction? I think right now we're looking at anywhere from a year to a year and a half to get this thing constructed. It just really depends on when the project goes to construction. If we're going to face two cycles of construction that fall in the winter months, it's going to be longer. Uh, if, if we're going to face two cycles of construction that fall in the winter months, it, it's going to be longer. You know, just because of the weather and the ability to construct things, uh, during that time of year. If, if we have a bid, uh, for the project that lands us, uh, with, you know, two cycles of constructions, you know, in the warmer months, then, then things are going to move a little bit quicker. So I, I would plan for about a year and a half, um, for, for construction. And, and that's all I have in terms of questions, uh, as I indicated. Um, after we get through some of these formal public comments here, I'll be happy to stick around and, and try to answer any questions I have. But, uh, I would like to go ahead and get started with the formal public hearing portion of the project. Uh, prior to beginning this, um, I'll just go over a couple of ground rules on how this works. Uh, for those who have not been involved in a process like this before, uh, this is your guys' opportunity to provide comments to the design team, uh, and city staff. Um, as is the case with various public meetings that are held here in the city such as council and, and planning commission, uh, each individual who wishes to speak this evening, uh, will have a limit of three minutes to provide comments. Uh, we will be recording, uh, this portion of the meeting as well. When you guys provide comments, we will listen to those comments, document them. Uh, this evening, following the meeting, uh, we will review those comments and, and take those comments into account. Uh, as I had indicated earlier, uh, we will respond to all comments received during this, uh, period in writing. And those will be posted to the project website, uh, by June 4th. A few cup, a couple of other things to note real quick. Um, for those who may not be comfortable providing, uh, their verbal comments this evening, there are several other ways to provide comments to, uh, city staff and the design team. Uh, as was indicated in the presentation, if you visit the project website, there's a public, uh, design public hearing comment forum, which can be filled out. Uh, there's also means to submit comments, um, written comments via email, uh, to myself. Or you can mail those into, uh, City Hall. Uh, we will be taking comments, uh, for another two weeks. Uh, so the deadline for those comments are Wednesday, March 26th. And then just to reiterate.
May 26th.
Sorry, yes, May 26th, not March, sorry. So Wednesday, May 26th. And then final thing here, uh, regardless of what method, uh, is chosen to deliver your comments, I, I just want to reiterate, uh, all comments received are going to be treated equally. Uh, they'll all be documented, they'll all be evaluated, and we will respond to those, um, you know, all in a similar fashion. Uh, with that being said, we'll go ahead and get started. Uh, if you wish to provide comments this evening, just use the raise hand icon, uh, that's located in the toolbar. Uh, and LaSheen, one, uh, mute your mic, your phone, uh, to get your comments started. Uh, last thing I'm going to ask, just, just before you guys begin speaking or, or as you're kicking things off, just please be sure to, um, list your name and then any affiliation or interest that you have, um, in the project. And with that being said, we'll go ahead and get started.
Perfect. And we also have two phone in callers. So if you are calling in by phone and wish to make public comment, you can press star nine on your phone and that will, um, enable your raise hand icon. Um, if you guys are used to city council meetings, you know, there's usually a three minute clock. And unfortunately, we don't have that, so I will be keeping track on my phone. Um, if you hear the alarm, that means your three minutes are up and to wrap it up, it goes on a little bit longer than that. I will have to disable your talking feature so we can make sure everyone gets the same amount of time. So with that being said, I'm going to bring in Scott Clark. Hi Scott, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me now?
We can.
Great, thank you. Good evening, everybody. Um, thank you for the chance to make some input. Um, overall, I think this is a great design. I'm very happy to see a move toward, uh, multimodal and pedestrian and cyclist friendly, uh, design here. Uh, I live on Westerly Avenue toward the western end of the project. And, uh, from the point of Summit East to Maury, I think everything looks good. Uh, my concern is mainly with, uh, the landscaping of the section between Summit and Westerly or Summit and the county line at the western end. We've got a pretty long time attachment here to that sort of green gateway to the city. That's been there for a very long time and I'm very concerned that with the conversion to a more formally landscaped look with a retaining wall, that's going to be a significant change in character for the, for the neighborhood. I do understand the restrictions created by the right-of-way limitations, but I, I strongly feel that the landscaping design at the westernmost end really needs to move beyond a simple vertical wall uh, and do a, a less geometric planting design and possibly step a wall or something like that to really boost the vegetated character of that, of that entrance gateway. Thank you.
Next up, we have Christopher Hawk.
Good evening. I'm Chris Hawk with the Piedmont Environmental Council, speaking on behalf of my colleague, Peter Krebs. Uh, we're really excited about this project. It's an example of what Smart Scale can do and how projects can be improved significantly through the public's participation. This is a crucial corridor for many levels of transportation, but the current configuration does not create a sense of safety for walkers and bikers alike. So thanks for your work on making this a safer corridor. This is one of those edge corridors where the city, county, and UVA should closely collaborate as Fontaine Research Park and the county portion of Fontaine are just a few feet away from the city line. It is important to recognize that the county also has a significant project in the works for Fontaine and 29 intersection, which will include a shared use path. Improvements to this corridor support a community effort to create out-the-door access to nature. While this is a crucial transportation corridor, it is an area where the line between active transportation and recreation blur. The western end of Fontaine Ave is an important trail nexus where lots of green space and trails converge, including the Ryvane Trail, UVA's Oak Hill System, the Department of Forestry's Trail System, the Ragged Mountain Natural Area, Alamo Hills Future Head Route Park, UVA's Fox Haven Property, Birdwood, Boarshead, and Camp Holiday Trails. These outdoor areas, all of which offer some degree of public access, add up to more than 2,200 acres for recreation use. That's almost three times larger than Central Park. And then lastly, please, uh, further research the potential impacts of higher canopy trees on solar panel potentials. Uh, this could be impactful to current and future panel installations. Thank you for the time to speak this evening.
Um, doesn't look like anyone else has their hands raised right now. Again, this is your opportunity to provide public comment. So again, you can hit that raise hand icon or hit star nine on your phone. And we would love to hear your comments. Um, next up, we have Tom Beninsky. Hi Tom, can you hear us?
Uh, I just hit unmute. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, no, I want to second the, the gentleman talking about the landscaping there at the, uh, bottleneck, I guess you'd call it, uh, you know, in terms of, uh, uh, I guess, you know, a terrorist approach instead of just a flat wall with, uh, you know, plantings, either, you know, some kind of vines or ivy. Even some, something really needs to be, uh, more welcoming than, than just, you know, retaining wall. So I don't know. I mean, if you want to, if you want to dress it up, you need to do more than, uh, I think what you have, uh, projected. That's about it.
No one else has raised their hand yet. I think that might be it, guys.
All right, so I'll just reiterate one more time. So this is, um, you know, the main public comment period for this project. Um, so if there's anybody else that would like to provide comments to us, uh, now is the time to do so.
Oh, we got one. John Orne, Orneelius, I am butchering you guys' names, I apologize. John, can you hear us?
Yeah. Um, can you hear me?
You can.
Yeah, I was just listening in, I, I commented earlier, but I guess you guys are talking about that bottleneck area where that wall is going to be. I mean, this is the main corridor for football games and things like that. So I don't know, maybe an idea of some graffiti work to welcome, you know, coming into the city. I mean, for, for football, UVA stuff, it, it, that's an idea. Uh, as everybody was kind of concerned with that area. If it's going to be a large wall, we could welcome, you know, our, uh, tourists and, um, you know, football fanatics and any other type of sports, uh, fanatics coming into the city. That's just, just an idea.
All right, so it doesn't look like we have anyone else. So I'll just throw it out one more time. Last call for any formal public comments related to this project. Feel free to, to raise your hand and, uh, provide the comments. All right, I'm not seeing anything, so we will go ahead and formally close the public comment period for this project. As I indicated before, I am happy to stick around. I know the, the meeting, uh, was slated to go till 7:30. I am happy to stick around and answer any questions. Um, you know, off the record, these will not be part of the transcript, um, but feel free to, to ask any additional questions. Uh, otherwise, I want to thank everybody for their time, uh, this evening. Just reiterating that your guys' feedback to this project has been vital, uh, in the design that we currently have. And, and we envision that being the case moving forward as well. So there's no such thing as bad feedback, so we're excited to, to get the work on some of these comments here tonight and, and see what can be done. Um, again, thank you guys for attending and if there's no, uh, further comments, um, you guys are free to, free to go. LaSheen, I see John has, uh, raised his hand. Can you bring him in?
Yeah.
To answer any questions that we may have.
Hey, John.
Yeah, sorry, I forgot to ask this question earlier during the thing. Is any of the utilities as far as gas and anything going to be affected for like the businesses? Cause I'm at the Guadalajara here in Fontaine and I forgot to ask that question earlier.
Amy, Owen, can you guys speak to that in a little more detail? You know, I expect everything will be maintained or if any shut offs need to be done, they will be coordinated, but I don't, I don't think so.
Yeah, then we're going to impact a couple of utilities. We're going to have some minor utility relocations that are going to have to happen, Kyle. I don't think we've got those completely tied down. But just like with any utility relocation, I mean, there'll be, as we tap in, there'll be a real short period of, of maybe a shutdown, but you, we can't like cut gas off the portions of the city for hours and days. So, um, generally the process there is new pipe is all laid, it's ready to go. Like for water line, it's been cleaned and pressured and, and, and tested. And then you just have to make the connections at the two ends and you sort of take the old line out of service in between there. So it's a pretty quick operation, especially on the size of lines we have in Fontaine. I mean, we're not dealing with high pressure 16 inch water lines or anything like that. It's pretty much service lines and they go pretty fast.
All right, I see there's still a handful of people on here. Do we have any, um, additional questions or comments anyone would like to address? LaSheen, I do have a question that Amy had asked. Will we be able to get a record of those in attendance this evening?
Yeah, I'll be, uh, send it to you after, um, we close out the Zoom.
Okay. And then this is going to be available as well on that streaming archive, correct?
It's available on our Facebook and also our Box Cash stream.
Okay. All right, so I'll throw it out one more time. Last call for questions. If not, we're going to go ahead and, um, and, and wrap this up for the evening. All right, I think we're good. So guys, thanks again for the help with this. You know, I appreciate the work that Ken and Tool was done and Amy and, and Owen. I appreciate everything you've done as well, so I'm looking forward to getting this thing, um, you know, rolling here. Um, and LaSheen, thank you as well for facilitating this. We should have another one coming up here on a different project in the near future, so hopefully it goes as smoothly as this did.
No problem.
All right, thanks guys. Everyone, have a good night.
Thanks, everyone. Good night.